Can we wait one minute, Friday? Just throw it, I'll shred it when I get home. Does that door lock? Maybe we are on. It's just as long as it's open for when someone. We're gonna go ahead and get ready. Thank you. Very good. Everyone, good evening and welcome to the Middleton Common Council. Today is September sixteenth. It is seven oh three P M. And I'm calling to order the regular council meeting, requesting assistance with roll call.
Alder Schaefer?
Here.
Alder Madden?
Here.
Alder Kalish?
Here.
Mayor Kuhn?
Here.
Alder Nelson?
Here.
Alder Myers?
Present.
Alder Heniro?
Here.
Alder Lorman?
Here.
Alder Crowe?
Here.
And up next with public comments?
Yeah, we have one person who would like to speak, Kelly Hilliard.
Hello, I'm Kelly Hilliard. I just wanted, I'm the sustainability coordinator. I just wanted to give a quick update on the scrap stop program that takes place at our quarry skate park parking lot. There's a food composting kiosk there. And I recently got the numbers to date for how much food that has been composted from that site. And Middleton has currently four hundred and thirty-nine registrations for the program. So four hundred and thirty-nine folks from this community have signed up for that so far. It's in its third month of operation. And in August, there were thirty-two hundred pounds of food that were composted. And so far since June first, Middleton has composted between three point five and four tons of food from that site. That's pretty good. It's more than any other site in this program that's grant funded by the USDA. So just wanted to give that quick update. It's going very well. And there's been little to no contamination. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anybody online? Okay.
Moving on to proclamations, proclamation recognizing September twenty twenty-five as Hunger Action Month in Middleton.
It's my privilege to read this resolution proclaiming September twenty twenty-five as Hunger Action Month in Middleton. Whereas thirty-six percent of Dane County households struggle to afford the basic necessities of housing, childcare, healthcare, food, and transportation. And whereas nine percent of Dane County residents and twelve percent of children in Dane County are food insecure, meaning they don't have enough food to eat and don't know where their next meal will come from. And whereas according to Feeding America, food insecurity is not a personal failure, but a systemic issue that can affect anyone who struggles with high living costs, expensive housing, unemployment, and low wage jobs. And whereas when people can't afford to buy nutritious food, they are at greater risk of nutrition-related illnesses, creating a cycle that is difficult to break. And whereas Way Forward Resources in Middleton operates a year-round food pantry that makes nutritious food available at no cost to area residents, providing an important source of food to supplement while people are able to buy at grocery stores and farmers markets or grow on their own. And whereas the food pantry helps make living in Middleton more affordable for people experiencing food insecurity, including families, senior citizens, people with disabilities, and individuals of all ages. And whereas visits to Way Forward's food pantry have nearly quadrupled since twenty twenty-two, with seventy-nine percent of the people served living in households with children. Now therefore be it resolved by the Middleton Common Council and Mayor Emily Kuhn, proclaim the month of September twenty twenty-five to be Hunger Action Month in Middleton. And be it further resolved that the council and the mayor encourage all residents to take action this month to learn about the prevalence and causes of food insecurity in our community and to donate to and volunteer with organizations that provide support to our Middleton neighbors who are experiencing hunger. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council on this sixteenth day of September twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion?
Schaefer move.
Myers, I'll second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I want to say thank you to all of the councilmen who brought in some food for Way Forward. And I want to say a special thank you to Alder Heniro for her leadership in this area, in the city, and role modeling behavior. Will you help us bring forward? And I'm gonna ask, I'm actually gonna ask for the food to be brought forward for the picture. And council members, whether you donated or not today, please, everyone come up. We want to see how our and if you don't have a bag, I think I have an extra. John Schaefer, I think, brought extra too. He said.
Your wonderful heavy box of laundry.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Oh, Abby, thank you.
Let's start working out with Abby. Maybe I'm gonna have anything to this side. Hey, moving on to Hispanic Heritage Month twenty twenty-five. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is observed annually in the United States from September fifteenth to October fifteen. A time to proudly celebrate the rich history, vibrant culture, and invaluable contributions of Hispanic and Latin Americans. And whereas the celebration began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week and expanded to a month in nineteen eighty-eight, with September fifteenth marking the independence of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, and Mexico and Chile celebrating on September sixteenth and eighteenth respectively. And whereas the twenty twenty-five theme of Hispanic Heritage Month is collective heritage honoring the past, inspiring the future. This theme serves as a reminder to continually recognize and learn about the diverse traditions, languages, arts, histories, journeys, and achievements of Hispanic and Latino communities. And whereas Hispanic Americans have been, have made lasting contributions to every facet of our society, enriching Middleton's cultural fabric, bolstering our economy, advancing education, and contributing to the arts, sciences, government, and business. And whereas the city of Middleton acknowledges the importance of education and raising awareness about the cultural achievements and contributions of Hispanic and Latin Americans and strives to inspire a deeper understanding and appreciation of the vibrant traditions and history of these communities. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month presents an opportunity to celebrate the talents and accomplishments of our Hispanic neighbors, to learn from each other's experiences and to promote the continued growth of this dynamic population in our community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Emily Kuhn, on behalf of the the Common Council of the City of Middleton, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth twenty twenty-five through October fifteenth twenty twenty-five as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Middleton. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council on the sixteenth day of September twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Lorman will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Heniro, a second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Sure, Madam Mayor, I will make a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Heniro, I'll second.
Any comments?
Just wanted to, we met with the sustainability last night, this thing with battery number ten. Just wanted to know that we agree that it's not going to work. And so we voted as a committee down, committee strongly wants it to happen in the future with the hope that the moment the ready equipment changes, it will follow. Just wanted to express those feelings.
Much appreciated. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ordinance's first reading. Ordinance to amend section seven point one five related to issuance of outdoor amplified sound permits.
Mrs. Madden, I move to suspend the rules.
Myers, second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the suspension of the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Returning to the ordinance to amend section seven point one five. Is there a motion?
Mrs. Madden, on behalf of Ellen L., I move approval of the amendment to section seven point one five related to the issuance of outdoor amplified sound permits.
Myers, second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the ordinance to amend section seven point one five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ordinance to repeal and recreate section sixteen point zero two related to state laws adopted for offenses against bodily security.
Mrs. Madden, I also move we suspend the rules for this vote.
Is there a second?
Schaefer second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules for this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Returning to the ordinance to repeal and recreate section sixteen point zero two, is there a motion?
Myers, move approval.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the ordinance to repeal and recreate section sixteen point zero two related to state laws adopted for offenses against bodily security, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to resolutions, resolution twos, two thousand twenty-five dash forty-five, accepting quit claim deed to outlot two plat of pheasant branch ridge.
Mrs. Heniro, I enthusiastically adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five.
Call us a second.
Any comments?
Yeah, so just want to acknowledge everybody that has worked on this particular issue, city staff, anybody above and beyond city staff that has worked on this. Wetlands provide numerous ecological benefits and values to our community. And this, they are often overlooked as not having much of value. And I think that the city took an enormous step and is leading the way to show that wetlands are a a critical piece of our community and serve valuable services. So thank you, city staff, and everybody that was involved in this. Because I think this is a, this is a win for the city, the current residents and future residents of the city of Middleton and beyond. The benefits will extend beyond Pheasant Branch as well. So, thank you.
I wholeheartedly agree and appreciate those comments. I'm super excited about this. This parcel is in District Six. I walk past it all the time with my dogs, as do all my neighbors. And this acquisition will help to advance the Graber Greenway project, which you may have heard me talk about before. WRMC is really involved in it. And by enhancing the Graber Greenway project and restoring wetlands, this will better protect Pheasant Branch Conservancy. I want to give credit to Abby and to Matt and to the Friends of Pheasant Branch too, because they really, they were working on this parallel to the city. In November of twenty twenty-two, Abby and I talked about this parcel at Bereks. We've met with the Friends because they were also interested in the status of this parcel and others in the area. And so kudos to Abby and Matt and to the Friends of Pheasant Branch Conservancy for making this happen. I, I hope the city will make an official announcement and maybe capture some of the comments that Alder College made about the the value of wetlands and, and why it's a great thing and, and frankly, an unusual thing for a city to do something like this. So I, I hope someone in the city will write a press release on this because it's really worthy, worthy of some news.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to committee appointments, the appointment of Tim Reinhardt to the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion?
Myers, I move approval of the appointment of Tim Reinhardt to the Public Works Committee.
Madden will second.
Very good. Any comments?
So, Tim has very good and sorely needed experience, which he's going to bring to the Public Works Committee. He has thirteen years of pre-construction experience. And as we go to look at how we can best implement the Complete Streets policy that city council adopted, we are going to be leaning heavily on people with that set of skills and experiences in committee.
All those in favor of approving the appointment of Tim Reinhardt to Public Works, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the updates on committees, commissions, and boards. Are there any updates? I, I think we heard one earlier from sustainability as well as the food material composting projects. So that's also great news. Any favor, Alder Heniro?
It's been a busy couple of weeks for me, so bear with me, please. Plan Commission. We deferred action to schedule a hearing for a request to amend the Fluke Future Land Use Map for the Imperial Garden Site. You may have read an article on the isthmus. I don't know if ones appeared elsewhere. Our concern was simply about changing the comp plan for a single development. I had explained or reminded my colleagues on the Plan Commission that council had, had faced this very same situation with regard to the Terrace Avenue project. And, and even in that case, we had a proposal to look at. We knew what the plan would look like. There would be some modifications. It was unanimously recommended by the Plan Commission, and it still did not pass. So, so I have concerns about trying to do this again for a single development. This time though, we didn't even have a concept to review. So that made it a little more questionable to go forward. Finally, the applicant did not have a representative at the meeting to answer our questions. So it was fairly fairly easy for us to say, let's, let's hold on to this and come back to it at a future time, which I expect we will. And I know the applicant has been in touch to share some beautiful renderings. But we'll still be working to maybe schedule a hearing on a flu map amendment. At the same meeting, we also encountered an obstacle for a development project going in at Demming Way Airport Road location. It's Madison Liquidators. They want to open up a store here. And it's right next to the Forsythia Street Parcel, for which we are paying an aviation easement to the owners. This parcel next door is also encumbered. And, and so we couldn't, we approved it with contingencies that were not really acceptable to, if you were the applicant, you would have thought, hmm, this, these are contingencies that pretty much prevent my development from going forward. And I believe that's the way the applicant reacted. So this one is all the more reason to step up our pressure. I know Brian has been reaching out. He's doing everything he can to get the FAA to grant the movement or shortening of run, of the turf runway. It might be time to bring in the people like Ron Johnson, who may be able to move that forward. Moving on to the Water Resources Management Commission. We finally had our hearing on the Middleton Beach Road Neighborhood Association appealing the city engineer's issuance of a stormwater management and erosion control permits for the development at twenty-one fifty-nine Allen Boulevard. I'm not even sure how many people were aware that there was an appeal and we had a hearing scheduled. There were three claims originally. One was dropped before the hearing began. And the WRMC went into closed session and we unanimously agreed to reject the appeal and uphold the engineer's decision to issue the permit. Tomorrow night at our meeting, we'll ratify our findings of fact and our decision. And I believe this action does not need to go before the council, and it remains to be seen if there will be any, any further appeals. DCCVA had its meeting last week. I was able to go and tour the village of Windsor Municipal Building. It's a beautiful building. It gave me hope that our campus project can go forward because the price tag for this thirty-one thousand square foot building was fourteen point five million dollars, and that included project management. And while it's not a, I wouldn't describe it as a fancy building, it is way nicer than the building we're in right now. I got to the tour and I can send photos to people. We have two Alders for every screen. They've got two screens for every trustee. Because they've got what everyone else is seeing, and they can look up stuff like ordinances or notes or whatever privately. It was just a beautiful facility. They had a very nice kitchen. I thought of our staff when I saw the kitchen area because it's just a, a nice gathering place, looking out the window to another gathering place outside. So it was a fantastic tour, and I suggested to Alder Nelson that at a future cow meeting, we, we might want to go out there for the tour and maybe even use one of their many community spaces in that building to have our meeting. And the staff, they were wonderful and had a lot of information. I want to mention that there's a virtual roundtable discussion hosted by DCCVA. It's on the topic of short-term rentals. It's going to be October first at twelve P M. There are four panelists, and I encourage anyone who's interested in housing to try to attend because we'll learn a lot about that. And then finally, we're all aware of the problem with the intersection on Century and Allen. We answered questions for George Sens. There's still a problem in that the pedestrian, since the permanent traffic signals are not electrified, there are no pedestrian crossing signals, which is not at all good. I've been hearing from colleagues and constituents about this. I finally decided today to go out there myself and give it a try, and it's harrowing. It's absolutely harrowing because of the way the temporary lights are set. You can't see with the only, you can only confirm that one set of lanes doesn't have the right of way, and that's the one you're standing right next to. You can't tell if the traffic coming towards you has it, or if the traffic heading north on Allen to, to turn or go into CBS has the right of way. You, you really just have to guess and hope for the best. And I did it at four o'clock in the afternoon. I can't imagine doing it when it's dark because a pedestrian would not be very visible. I think we need at the very least to have signs letting people know that the buttons, because there is no signage saying these buttons don't work. So people could go up and press the button and wait and wait and wait and finally just, you know, go for it. I've talked to Brian and would really like to maybe have everyone on council and our staff just try to walk through this intersection and see what the problem is because we, we really need to either compel MG&E to do something much sooner than the end of October, which is their plan right now. Or we have to put up some major signage to help our pedestrians know what to do at this problematic intersection. Once it's electrified, I think it'll be great. But right now, it is, in my opinion, it's not safe for pedestrians and people on on bikes or in, you know, mobile, using mobility devices. So that's it.
Well, my thing with sustainability, actually, two more. You're kind of praising Kelly. She's a momma employee. And we're putting her on that committee. She is so professional on top of this thing that we, we actually get stuff done and things happen. Thank you very much. One of the things I want all to think about, we're running this little program called Sustainable You, which getting these speakers in, and since COVID's been done, tenants has been becoming sort of dismal from like four to ten people showing up. And education is a very big thing for the sustainability people. And so we're looking for ideas, just start to explore, at least I'm pushing for this, that other ways we might try to educate, that way that might help get us to young people easier than just having a lecture where people expected to come on and sit and listen to something. So that's on the agenda. If you have any thoughts or ideas or anything about this, share them with me or anybody else who's telling you. And I think that's, that's one of the things I'm gonna push it forward on.
Alder Myers?
Just a brief update on Public Works. We are in the process of finalizing when our joint meeting with the pedestrian, bicycle, and transit committee will be. Looking at the doodle poll, the most likely two dates are Monday, September twenty-ninth at six thirty P M. Or Monday, October thirteenth, also at six thirty P M.
With Abby's permission, could I announce the new placemaking planner? Okay, great. We have a new employee in the planning department, and her name is Jolynn Rota? Rota. And she is going to be helping out with the Arts Committee and with CDA, and then with the Planning Department. And she's already on top of everything. She's got art walk planning going on. And October fourth, mark your calendar, it's Stars Hollow Day. It's in the afternoon from three to seven. This is all celebrating that show, The Gilmore Girls, and it is astonishing. And it is astonishing how many fans there are of this show. So mark your calendars. There's still time to watch some old episodes and get yourself back up on track to know who the characters are. But they're going to have stuff like Luke's Coffee at Stone Horse Green. They're going to have a knitting, knit-a-thon around the fire pit. There's going to be Miss Patty's School of Dance. We're going to have some dancers from the local ballet schools.
So sweet.
They will have Rory's Reading List, because the book mobile is going to be there. I mean, it's just too good. And my idea, as Alder Schaefer was talking, was let's get the sustainability project going on Stars Hollow Day. I mean, I think there's an episode in the further episodes of Gilmore Girls where they have to help out at a compost thing. And they lose something in the compost and they have to go through it. Anyway, so there's a way we can tie it in. And there are, you know, look-alike contests and everything. It's amazing how many people who watched the show when they were young are now having their kids watch it with them. And so it's, it's just a really fun way to get everyone downtown. So please join us.
Delightful. I'm, I, it is on my calendar. You must have told me already. I'm excited and we'll have coffee. Luke's, Luke's Coffee. Fantastic. Any other updates? I think we covered so many, so much going on. Fantastic. Moving into convening into closed session, if you could assist.
Sure, we need a motion and a second and affirmative roll call vote to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one G for conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved pertaining to TGA eight, eight five zero zero dash eight five five one, Research Way LLC versus the city Middleton, two thousand five CV zero zero one nine seven seven.
Schaefer moves that we convene to closed session.
Madden will second.
Alder Schaefer?
Yes.
Alder Madden?
Yes.
Mayor Kuhn?
Yes.
Alder Nelson?
Yes.
Alder Myers?
Yes.
Alder Heniro?
Yes.
Alder Lorman?
Yes.
Alder Crow?
Yes.
Okay, give me one moment to get things ready.
And you missed one.
Sorry. Alder Kalish?
Yes.